The council to order, this is the time and places advertised. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting our pledge of allegiance.
I.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Lewiston. Our next order of business is the Act of Agenda, item A, consideration of matching funds for transportation at the airport. Discussion and consideration of the request from Nesper's County Commissioners to match its recent commitment of $500,000 towards transportation at the Lewiston-Nesper's County Airport. This is an action item. And councillors, I will throw this open to you if you would like to hear from anyone at the Lewiston Airport. I see that some of their board members are in the audience today. And we also have at least one county commissioner here, maybe two, I see two, in the audience here. So councillors, I'll open it up for your benefit.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question to the Director, Mike here.
When you speak, remember to speak up loudly and clearly. The microphones are the green circles above you so that those in the back of the room and those at home can hear what you have to say. Welcome.
So my question is, it's from the FY24 MRG we had with United Airlines. And they went through the $4 million in, I think, what was it, eight of the 12 months or nine of the 12 months? And also, in the last month or so, the airport's been advertising that we had exceeded, had the most employments in history. So I don't get the gist of where we would ever average out. I mean, if we go through our $4 million in eight months, I mean, is there ever an endgame where we'll ever meet it?
I think there is councillor. If, with the new, as we went into fiscal year 24 MRG, we added Seattle service. So we ended up getting another 70-seat EMB-175 jet to Seattle, which added a whole, it flooded 30% more seats into the market right as we were going into this MRG. That is going to take a year or so to shake out, to fill those, get that capacity filled. And then with, as I mentioned, with that E175 aircraft, you have 12 seats that are first-class service, and that's where 90% of all the profits come from. So we have three flights right now with that first-class service on it. So I do believe that, and I am happy to report that we have 34% more passengers. Last month, they started flying the 175s through, to Denver on United, and they've increased their capacity 34% in one month. So, and actual passengers went up 34%. So it's being used. You're absolutely right. Is there an endgame if the planes are full? We're with, with United's added with Seattle and Salt Lake, it's going to take a little bit more time. They're at 80, 85% to get to the 90% using, and as you get those first-class service, we also, it takes a little bit more time to build out the business class portion. Everybody's looking for the, and I heard it today, someone flew two people to California for $225 a person this week. So the fares are great and everybody's going after those, but the business travelers need flights now and those, they use their miles. I think once we shake through this for a couple of years, as we have started, it's been a couple of years, so we're towards the tail end of getting the business clientele to switch over to go into United. So I think there is hope.
Councillor Picklemeyer.
So with that, you also stated, I think it was maybe in the last meeting or something, that part of the reason for the lack of profit is because of all the economy seats and not the business seats are the first classes where they make their money. But in the summertime, when cruise lines are gone, they fill the plane up, correct?
They do.
So there's no money in it.
It's harder to make more money with those pre-planned, pre-purchased tickets, especially when you're looking at American Cruise Lines where they buy their tickets three, four months in advance. American Cruise Lines offers, and United offers this, we actually knocked on all the business doors of the province, we're going to do it again. But if you're a large business, you plan on traveling a lot, you get a discount on top of the lowest published fare. So if you're buying 20,000 or 50,000 seats a year per airline, you're going to get a pretty good discount on that. So you're right, those folks flying with, for American Cruise Lines, all those pre-planned trips that are three, four months out in advance, those are the lower-priced fares.
Yes, Director. Who, if any, have you contacted out of the rest of the community to buy into this?
So we've reached out to, initially when United started up, we knocked on, we went through the Chamber of Commerce to get a list of, I want to say, close to 30, maybe 40 businesses around town, and we went knocking on doors and showing them all the packages that United offers for business travel. Last month, there's been a few contacts with the county, with the, excuse me, the airport commissioners reaching out to, like, American Cruise Lines, and they've, they've all put in some work to work to knock on doors with our local business clientele. To my understanding, at this point, I don't think anybody's, including American Cruise Lines, is interested in providing support for the service.
Well, American Cruise Lines has already supported us by bringing the clients here. So for them to do a lot more, I wouldn't expect that, and they're, you know, they're doing the cruise dock as well, I believe, they're contributing that, so they are already contributing. But the people that, like, city, county in Soton, or, you know, any of those, have you talked to them? I mean, initially, I can see why you would go out and introduce United to them, but we're talking about an MRG. We're talking about supporting that, and it's money that sounds like it's going to go on for many years, not just this year, and we have nothing to look at. This is like a ghost. I mean, we have no idea how this works or anything else other than what you tell us, but that's all magic. So it's really an awes behind the curtain, doing everything and controlling everything. And you agree to it.
I absolutely understand.
And it's not, it's not the kind of thing that we are used to dealing with.
No, and I will be frank and honest, the airlines 100% control the market because they keep consolidating down. We're down to three United States legacy carriers now. I mean, there was triple that 10, 15 years ago. So they call all the shots, especially now through COVID, when they lost hundreds of millions of dollars during COVID, when everybody stopped flying, and there was a huge, they did a mass layoff, and then they had this super resurgence in service. So there's, there's all these, this flux, but they call the absolute, and it's not just, we're not talking about just Lewiston. For example, essential air service communities, those are communities back in deregulation in 1980 when the federal government told the airlines where to fly.
I do understand.
Yep. When that deregulated, they all started going to the bigger ones, and so they said, "Look, you, 130 cities, you're in the system, you're not going to, anybody else is not going to get," they're guaranteed to get air service. I was in Pierce, South Dakota, where I came from, was one of those cities. We actually fell out of it because an airline said they would operate without a subsidy. Then chaos hit with the pilots' shortages back in 2012. We were fortunate to get reinstated on that. I think we have Chairman Peters here that can help enlighten you with some of the new changes with essential air service that's potentially coming in the horizon, that we could actually be back on that. If, if this is the future for you, the United States of America, that rural America is going to have to pay tens of millions of dollars over the course of, you know, a decade to get their air service, we need, we need support. And it's just not, it shouldn't be shouldered on the city and the county, it should be shouldered like the state of Wyoming does. The state should have some money in it, the federal government should have some. If they allow just three carriers to call all the shots, and we're suffering, I think it matters that we reach out. I think those, those are what the pivotal tide that's going to change is getting the support from the state and the federal government.
Thank you.
Councillor Picklemeyer.
Thank you. So kind of a carry-on with that was, I think in the last meeting, city attorney mentioned when she was going through MRGs and stuff, there was something about part of it could or should be the number of seats. So the way it is now, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Was it guaranteed seats or something like that?
Right, and it was for initial startup, right. And there are, with, with the new service being from a CRG 200, the 50-seat jet that we just got rid of in October, they're flying the 70-seats, I'm sure we more than qualify to have that MRG. I don't believe the MRG is at risk of being rejected from the federal government from, from those standpoints at all.
So maybe I'm just misunderstanding. Are we saying that the airport or the airline, United Airlines, is not making any money by flying into Lewiston?
This is correct.
Or being here in Lewiston.
They indicated they have not made a profit one month since they've been here.
But then yet we keep talking about lower ticket prices. So that makes me feel like then the citizens are not getting that benefit, but other people that are flying here are getting the benefit of a cheaper price. If they can't afford, if they don't get a profit, why aren't they raising prices to their tickets so they can get a profit?
Exactly. No, everybody is guaranteed, I mean, we're all getting fantastic fares. We got people driving three hours to come to our airport to fly out, so the prices are super good for anybody flying out of Lewiston right now. What happened is when we decided to come up with the MRG last year, Seattle service just launched, and it's 100% United and Delta Airlines, the two of the three big legacy carriers competing right here. And Delta is going to, it's no different than your gas station and your gas station competing, and you're going to do the lost leader thing and see who's going to bleed out first, and it's big business playing against each other. We've been benefiting with the incredible prices, but both the airlines are going to have to give a little bit. If they would, if they would put it back into the national average, the MRG would go away. Right now, we're suffering because those, the investment that Delta just brought with Seattle, that adds all those extra, they have that many more seats to fill, it's just going to take time for those two to sort that out. 100% anybody flying out of Lewiston's getting a good deal.
I just, there's nothing for us to see that this is, that there's an end of the road. You know, I keep hearing there's a possibility, or look, might be, we're not getting, yes, by this date, we're going to have it, where we're not relying on the citizens anymore. And as top of that, we don't really know where the money is going. For transparencies, for citizens, they're not seeing the books and saying, okay, this is what we're putting our money towards. We're just believing that the money and that they're breaking even, that United Airlines is breaking even. I'm not saying ill-intent, that they're not telling us the truth, but it's, for the citizens that are putting the money into this, they're not seeing the full transparency of where their dollars are going. And I just, I can't, I can't get my head to wrap around it.
Well, I think it has everything to do with, if you, if you showed your competition, all your secrets of how you're going to do it, I think that's why we had some, a few items redacted in the agreement. There are trade secrets that they're not willing to share with others. We have every, every reason to believe, and it's looking at all the other cities, including cities, Kansas City, excuse me, there's several, and even within our current consultants' clients that are in the same boat as us. So $7 million a year is kind of the going price for essential air service, and a lot of them right now, it's hard to believe in that case. But you're not going to, I don't believe you're going to get any more information out of them than you have. I believe Mayor Johnson did get quite a bit of information of what the price per seat was, how many seats, and they did provide some of that data.
A lot of airports, sorry to follow up. A lot of airports are actually backing out, or cities, I'm sorry, cities are backing out because they can't afford these. They can't afford to continually pay these huge price tags that these airlines are asking for. And obviously Lewiston is looking to build our revenues, and we're still living on a budget from pre-COVID, so it's not like we're swimming in the dollars here. And then we have a lot of other entities that need funds, and I just, I don't see how we can continually withstand this. Even if we gave the money now, in a month and a half or so, we're going to be at the same situation, asking for money again. It's not sustainable for Lewiston.
I, no question, if that was directed to me, I would, I would say that you do have some tough shoes. I respect your decisions either way, how you work this out. Honestly, I really believe what you're doing for the community matters, and we're just one component of it. I would say that the businesses rely on it, you know, Valley Vision said these seven new businesses that are interested in coming to town, this is the catalyst, that the airlines is, the train tracks that came to town for the first time, it builds businesses and Looking at the long game, having air service with, with three different hubs on two legacy carriers is going to, we're, we're one of the very few during COVID that actually grew our routes most, over 200 cities lost service, and we were gaining because of what we've done with the county and you've committed to in the past. So I think we're going in the right direction. I think there is, right at the end of the tunnel. I would like to invite Gary Peters up because he just went to Washington DC and met with folks about the essential air service community program. If you're interested in listening to what that, I think that's probably the best endgame of zeroing out the MRG of all.
Director, I'm going to see if we had a couple more questions here before you step down. Somebody, Councillor Preston Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I went back through this last year, you know, it was a, that was a big price tag that we had to swallow. And yet, at the same time, we were told that, you know, if things work out the way they look like they're going to be working out, you're probably only going to be on the hook for $860,000 or something along those lines. Yet at the end of the fiscal year, $400 million or $4 million walked away into their pocket. So I don't know where this ends, and that was kind of a big shock, especially after what we had discussed several times.
Councillor Schroeder, did you have one more question?
Oh, go ahead and say mine, thank you.
Okay, Councillor Klein.
I have a comment. I can't support United anymore.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Littke, do you have a question for Director Isaacs before we call Chairman Peters up?
No questions.
Thank you, directors. Councillor, Director, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Peters, you volunteered your name.
I heard that.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Gary Peters, 1915 Cherry Street, Clarkston Airport Authority Board Chairman. So Cassie, I heard you loud and clear at the last meeting on what's your plan, so, which I thought was great. I've actually been in Washington DC since Thursday, just got home about four hours ago. As you know, this, our country's government is about ready to change in a very big way, and we're about to have new chairman on all of our committees, whether it's in the House and the Senate, a new president, we're about to have different control of all branches of government, and I can tell you for a fact, things are changing rapidly in Washington DC. And Mike hit the nail on the head, how do we sustain this? It's through the original EAS program that states like Wyoming, South Dakota, North Dakota, because we can't afford this forever. I'll agree with every one of you in that regard, but just know, if we don't buckle down and figure out a way to get to a point where we can have assistance to afford it, we're never going to get this opportunity again. I can, I can just guarantee you, we will be a one-horse town. We will have lost two airlines in the last six years, and it's going to cost you a lot more money than this to get them back. I can tell you, when, when we lost Alaska, and I got on the board shortly after that, we threw a two-figure, more than $10 million to get Alaska to come back, and they appreciated our offer, they took it under consideration, and the answer was no. So that's, that's what it's going to cost, and that's not a legacy carrier, that's not where you get on and go anywhere in the world, that's Alaska, you know, somewhat of a local airline here based out of Seattle, and they would not consider coming back into our community for $10 million in 2019 or 2020, whenever, whenever we got to the point, they would actually return our phone calls and sit down and have a, a, a meeting. You know, I see they just named Transportation Secretary here about an hour ago. I was actually hoping Sam Graves out of Missouri was going to get the job because he's very much in tune with EAS, and John Thune, the new chairman of the Senate, was a huge proponent of EAS, he was actually from Mike's prior town in Pierre. So John Thune and Jerry Moran, a senator from Kansas, who will likely take Maria Cantwell's spot on the Chairman Transportation Committee in the Senate, they are huge fans of the EAS. They've seen the benefit, they know that for every dollar Wyoming's invested, they've seen $12 in return, and I just hope we're on that list when that comes around, if we can get an opportunity, because that's, that's how it needs to be paid for. It needs to be paid for through that program, or the state needs to step up. Idaho needs to follow Wyoming's lead if we're going to keep big carriers in communities like ours. I know when, when Mayor Johnson started his Idaho Air Service Committee, which I was thrilled to be on, we made a lot of good traction, and, and we were getting in front of a lot of state legislatures and the governor, and we were headed down that road before, you know, funding kind of wiped out in further, you know, meetings and in funding the committee further through COVID. You know, one thing, Mr. Spick, or Councillor Picklemeyer, you know, the other thing, when we signed this original MRG, you got to remember, we were just coming out of a very pro-energy administration, and fuel prices were a lot different what they were in 2020 than they have been the last three and a half years. I have to hope and think fuel prices, which affects airlines, it's their number one cost is fuel, obviously, that's going to come down. As we become energy independent with this new administration, it's going to help the airlines, and you've all heard the campaign, I don't need to make this political, but you've, you've heard all of them, it's, it's in the top three things they're going to accomplish is getting energy prices down. That's going to affect airlines' bottom lines, and, and the CRG 200, I know we've, we've beat it like a dead horse. It was not a good airplane, it was not a great, especially to go to Denver. I mean, you're talking about a, you know, it's almost twice as long a route as Salt Lake or seven, another 75%. It's just the wrong airplane, but that's the only airplane we had available to start the service, and all routes lose money generally the first few years. It takes, it takes years to get people familiar with the route. I mean, you'd be amazed how many people in the community here still don't know we have Seattle service. I mean, we spent, what, $250,000 in marketing to let them know we have Seattle, and I run into people all the time, like, well, you can't fly to Seattle out of Lewiston. You know, it takes time, you know, it takes getting credit cards and building miles. We still have people that are burning their Alaska miles, you know, from 1983 to 2018 when they were here, and from their mileage program, so it takes time to get settled in. But my plan, if we're given the opportunity, is to work the federal side of things, get the EAS program going. I can tell you, we have the right consultant, we have the right people, we're, we're connected, we'll, we'll get an answer. I can't guarantee you that, I wish I could, but I can't, but I can tell you, put the work in. And, and I know Hannah's already put a bunch of work in on the state side, you know, we've been talking back and forth about legislators, she's done a lot of work in Boise and has better connections than I do down there, but, you know, that, that has to be our plan in the future. But if we don't, if we don't cover this interim and let this new jet fill up and make up the void for United, we're not going to get that chance. We're never going to know if, you know, are we going to get to make it, because they'll pull out. So we're, I know it's a huge decision, and, but it's a generational decision. I know I've said that several times, and we learned it with Alaska. You know, they, they don't, they don't want to leave communities like that, and I know United doesn't want to leave, they would have already left, to be honest with you. You know, they, they want to build the service here, but we just, this is kind of part of the process, unfortunately. These days with, when there's few airlines and, and they can go anywhere they want and make a profit, I know you read the paper, United made a billion, eight or whatever they made last year. Well, yeah, I'm sure that's true, but they didn't make it on this route, and that's what they're telling us, is we can move this bigger jet into other cities and be profitable tomorrow, but we want to serve the community. We know you guys have paid a lot of money to try and make this work, we're, we'll see it through, you know, if, if we give them the opportunity. I'd also stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillors? Councillor Forsman?
I think councillor Schroeder kind of was asking, but I don't recall, do we, I have actually talked to Soton and Clarkson and asked them if they're willing to put in the money to.
You know, we, we have not had any formal meetings, to be totally honest with you. I don't know what that process looks like, you know, there's a lot of, it's going to take some time, just a lot of grant questions, you know, you have to, obviously, we have to be careful how we spend the money, that's why it has to come from you, not us. They're not an owner in the airport, so I don't know how that works. I don't know, can a government agency from a adjacent state that doesn't have ownership contribute? You know, that's. You know, that's, I don't know those questions. Those are, those are all great questions. Those are all options that we would love to explore and, and learn. You know, if you look at Pullman and the success they've had with getting federal money, it's political. Like, period. You, you can't even argue it. It's political. You know, when you have Maria Cantwell chairing the Senate Transportation Committee, her and Patty Murray, their alma mater is WSU, and the only four things the congressional leaders in Washington State can agree on is that airport. They're basically bipolar unless it's, you're talking about that airport. And they've gotten $300 million in the last eight years. That doesn't happen. I mean, it's, it's talked about, if you go to conventions around the country, which I've been to several, it's the talk of the conventions. How in the hell does a sleepy little airport in the middle of nowhere, that should be a crop dusting strip, get $300 million in air service when there's an airport 30 miles to the south that can outperform them eight ways to Sunday? And, and we can't get $10 million? It's politics. And that's how we lost this. We weren't paying attention to politics. We had no relationship with our elected officials. We had no relationship with our congressional, our Senate. We had, we had no FaceTime with, you know, who's talking about EAS? Why weren't we trying to get on EAS for the last 15 years? I mean, we checked the box more than probably most of the cities receiving federal money. But you know what? We've never asked. Now, now we're turning over those rocks. Now we're doing, now we're putting in the work.
Counselor Forsman?
So how quickly is United jumping at the bit to get out of here if we don't agree?
I guarantee, we, they will, they will, they will let us know, they'll cancel service by the end of the week. And I would assume they probably fly through November, maybe sometime in December if we don't fund this extension tonight.
Leave by December?
You know, Mike and I both asked that question and definitely by the end of the year. And they'll refund tickets that have been sold past there. And the reason is they can, you know, just think of all the, the ski areas and the winter wonderlands where they could pop the jet in right now and, and rope, you know, and add service to, you know, expensive type tickets. I mean, they'll go somewhere with the jet immediately. I mean, they've, they've been, I know, I know this is hard, there's a lot of moving parts, it's hard done, but they've been pretty patient with us.
And they've already stated that, basically, that's their plan?
Hundred percent, yep. And there, it was, you know, there was, there was very good news coming out of the county last week. I mean, the counties, you know, they're, I can't speak for them. I, I thank them that they, you know, I was actually gone, I didn't get to go to their meeting. But they, they saw the value in making this investment and stepping up as one of the sponsors, so I, I thank them. I, I know that was a big question, you know, and I think they heard you loud and clear, Kathy, at the last meeting that, you know, you wanted to know what the county was going to do, you know, as the other sponsor. So, so I appreciate the county recognizing that and giving us the opportunity to come here tonight. And, and, you know, it gave me a chance to go back to DC this week also. And I mean, I, I feel there's a lot going on back there. It's, it's a whole different vibe than it's been the last four years, I can tell you.
Right, um, sorry, Mayor.
Counselor?
Our last question. What other airlines have we tried to get to come to Lewiston?
Well, we tried to get Alaska back, hard, immediately. I mean, basically, we basically told, we gave them an open checkbook. We said, what will it take to get you to come back? Obviously.
Other than Alaska, though?
Well, the problem is, there's just, who else are you going to get, would be my question. Southwest generally will only go into a city if they can get four destinations. So they'll, like, for example, they went into Bellingham during COVID, and I think they did Denver, LA, Phoenix, and Las Vegas. They just announced three months they're pulling out because they couldn't be profitable. So Southwest is, we've reached out to Southwest, we asked the question, but we know we don't have the employments to make four cities like that stick. And they only fly 737s. You know, so now you're talking 135 or 137-seat jet rather than a 76. So, you know, you, you gotta be realistic. Who, you know, there was some pop-up, uh, other airlines during COVID that I think, you know, already folded. You know, they couldn't even make it the two years it took. So it's, I mean, Mike said it right, unfortunately, they just, with allowing all these mergers to happen, they, they call all the shots. And it's, it's just, it's kind of the world we live in. And I mean, I think all of you were sent the article on the MRGs and it's just going to be something we're going to have to navigate through and, and figure out how to fund, you know, until we can, until they can make a profit. And, and I just don't think we can emphasize the big jet enough, you know. And I think if you remember back, we told, we, we were very honest with everyone in the beginning, like, we have to get to the day we can fly an E175 out of Lewiston. That's the jet that can get us out of the hole and to where they can show a profit. And, and at first, you just couldn't get them because it was such a popular jet. You know, no one is really making, they're, they're in their own world. You know, Embraer with that 76-seat jet, you know, Airbus and Boeing are not making a competitive regional airplane right now. And with all the Embraer turboprops and the dash eight turboprops and the CRJ series going away, you know, you have a pretty captive audience for that 76-seat plane. Just everyone wants that plane. And so we finally just got, it's been flying for a month. You know, we've only had the airplane that can get us to profitability operating for one month.
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. You know, it just amazes me how this company, United, thinks that they can redact their contract, they can play games like blind man's bluff with us. We're the, we're being bluff all the time. We don't have an answer for anything because we can't see anything. And it's redacted or you tell stories or it's, it never comes to fruition. So is there any way that we get a contract that says, you pay this amount of money this long and you're out of it? I mean, that is the question we've all asked from the beginning. And we're not getting anywhere. We're still being bluffed and we're still being blind.
With all due respect, they are a business. They're not the, not, just hear me out, they're not the post office and they're not the railroad. They're not subsidized by the government. You know, they're a business. And so they're, they're making business decisions for their shareholders. And I, I agree with you, I'd love to see it all too, Kathy, I'd love to see the breakdown. But I mean, fuel changes one cent, and I forget the percentage. It's crazy how it affects an airline's bottom line, like one cent of jet fuel. And so when you factor in fuel and then all the different algorithms that are ticket pricing, where they're having to be competitive, like, you know, their formulas probably change... I mean, it'd be hard to answer, to be honest with you. I, I, I know what you're saying. And then by, by giving up those formulas, you're just telling your competitors how you figure fares. And you, and I wouldn't want that getting out if I was in that kind of business that, you know, to show my competitors on a global platform how I figure fares. So I'm sure a lot of that's proprietary and I agree with you. I, I wish, I, I wish I had a better answer. I wish I knew that we got to here, here, and it'll end. But I don't think anyone has that answer. I'm sure every community that in our situation would love to have that broken out for them. And you're just, I just don't think you're ever going to get there.
I don't think our community is going to last very long. I, there's already rumblings not to do this, not to do it at all. And why are we doing something we cannot have a contract with? Why are we doing this when we can't see an end game? Why are we doing this?
I don't think anyone can predict the future.
We're being bluffed.
You know, would be my answer. I can tell you what will happen if we don't, because we saw it in 2018. We'll go back to one carrier, fares will skyrocket, and people will drive to Spokane. That's what will happen. And then we'll be lucky to keep one city, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm not just being frank. I mean, we know that's what will happen. And the reason we got the Seattle service with no MRG is because of the competition by having Denver. Denver makes this all work. It makes Salt Lake competitive, it gave us Seattle, it's keeping everybody honest. And I, I would look at it as an investment. That's how I would look at it, to keep all of the air service going. But that's just me.
Maybe you know something we don't know.
I just...
We just feel like we're being bluffed all the way.
I can assure you, you're not being bluffed, that, I mean, you're, you're getting every ounce of information. We are, we're, we're passing, it's, it's just, it's the world you live in with, with airlines right now. I mean, I mean, pick, Google it, read any art, like, it's, it's not just us.
A lot of communities aren't paying it.
Well, but a lot in Wyoming are, and they're seeing a $12 return for every dollar they invest. And they, and they'll, and they'll say right in the article, without air service, our community dries up. If we can convince 25% of the business passengers that are driving to Spokane to not, we'll, we'll win. We'll get this. That's what we have to do. That will put us over the hump with the business travelers and be profitable. I know, I'm sure, I think, all of you saw the invitation to the new owners of Clearwater Paper. I think next, I believe it's next week or after that. I mean, we're going to plan on getting in front of them as soon as possible and letting them know just how vital their travelers are because, you know, they're, they're, they're filling up a lot of the business travels out of here, the United's routes. And one of you asked a question earlier, and we'll see if I can try and answer that, when you said, who have you called on? So when we originally brought in the United service, they sent several corporate salesmen out. I went out with two different gals, you know, we went to WSU, Schweitzer, University of Idaho. That's when we started the shuttle service to get the students coming down and some of the faculty. But, and I forget the name of these terms, it escapes me right now. But when you're a large business like that and you have a corporate travel agreement, you have a corporate travel agent that deals directly with the airline for negotiating ticket prices, you can only have that agreement with two airlines. And it's something mandated by the DOT. And so everyone, what we, we had talked to at the time, were, still had their Alaska agreement. And then they had signed a Delta agreement because we didn't have another carrier. So at the time, even Schweitzer and some of these others, they're like, well, we would have to drop one of these other airlines in order to have a United agreement to complement either our Alaska or our Delta. And so to even get them to let us quote a route comparison, we had to get them to make a commitment that if we could, if we could give them a city-to-city price, like, for example, I think Clearwater Paper, we wanted to give them a Green Bay, which I think is the city they fly into, one of their plants or their closest airport. But to even get them to do that, they had to put their other airline on notice that they were contemplating switching to another corporate agreement. So it's, it just, it takes time, like, it's kind of sticky, you know, to get these agreements in place. And so that, that's basically what we're asking is, can we have the time to give it everything we have? And, I mean, reach out to, you know, see what the hurdles are through Assotin County and Clarkston. But, you know, back, back to their agreement, where you have two states owning the same airport, that would be pretty ideal, to be honest with you. I mean, if you look at, I'm not saying that's the plan or what we should be going for, but if you look at the money they've been able to get, I mean, they, they're, they're swimming in money. You know, they, they give them $250 million to move the dirt, they give them another $50 million for a terminal. And before they even begin the terminal project, they give them another $10 million in case they run over the $50. It's politics. Hundred percent. So let's go, let's go play the game.
Mayor?
Counselor?
You said that what would make it so that airlines are actually being profitable unless where they kind of have the upper hand was the EAS program?
EAS, essential air service.
Essential air service program. And then having only a certain number of airlines allowed in the state? What was that?
You have to bid it. And so, and the way they did, they opened that up, and I, Mike could probably answer this better. I, I believe in the early 2000s, but then they capped it in 2011. And, which is kind of weird. But, you know, it all depends who's in power, like, you know, who, who has control, the Senate and the House? And like, do they, do they want to invest money in this or not? I can tell you right now, the administration coming in is very pro-EAS. All you've got to do is look at the, the players. Moran and Thune and Graves and, and Sean Duffy, who was just named Transportation Secretary a couple hours ago, they're, they're very pro-EAS because they're in these rural states and they saw the benefit to it. You know, I think some of the leaders in the pack, you know, maybe Secretary Buttigieg and some of these other chair committees, you know, that they're, when you're in Seattle or if you're in, you know, South Bend or Indianapolis, you know, you don't care about these small airport towns that need air service. You have, you know, you have 5 million employments at your airport, you don't even think about it. And then you have, you know, four freeways on top of that, or trains, or, or what have you. We have none of that. You know, we have no freeways. We have, we have an airport.
So with the talk of the administration changing, obviously, and if I'm understanding that correctly, then that could mean that the airlines, the tables might churn, right? Where they're now able to get money, they're going to want to maybe be more aggressive to go into cities. If that's the case, it doesn't make sense why we wouldn't wait out and wait for it to turn into our favor and say, come to us. Now you...
Be awesome, I agree with you. We're, we're just not getting that, we're not going to get that opportunity. It's tough, business is all about timing. Trust me, our, our biggest business opportunities have came when we've, we're, we're tapped and we've gone out something else. And sometimes we just got to make real hard decisions. And, and that's kind of where we are as a, and I know it's hard because you're a government, you're not a business and you're spending other people's money. So you have to make, you have to take every precaution to make the best decision possible. So I get that. But we're not going to get that opportunity, unfortunately. I mean, we're, we're kind of betting on the come, if you will, you know, to make the decision and then hopes that we have a friendly government that we can go after, you know, end the plan. What you said, what's your plan? I mean, that's, that's our plan. And that's the federal side. The state side, and, and may, maybe Mayor Johnson can comment if he wishes after, after I get down on his opinion on where we got with the Air Service Committee. But we were making traction and the money's there. You know, Idaho is sitting on one of the largest surpluses in the country. It's just a matter of getting the money there. You know, how'd the port get $10 million? It's because we went to Boise and worked hard to get the money out of the transportation fund to the port. It just takes hard work, takes time.
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. So the matching money of, if we were to do that with the county, the $500,000? What does that cover? I mean, where did, where did the last monies end? And, because this is only supposed, that amount is only supposed to take us through the end of the year. So when did the last monies end?
Mike could probably answer that better than I can. But I believe in the third quarter is when they, is when they basically burn up the MRG. And so they obviously didn't bill us any of the overage because we'd already hit the cap on the MRG. So they have basically ate the loss that they experienced from now. This will get a, and a lot of this, a lot of these, don't think that they're pressuring us, but they have to build routes like months in advance and as part of their pilot union agreement. So, so that's why they're trying to put us, they want a decision now so they can start scheduling pilots. I believe it's in March or April, right, right now, out of December. They're scheduling April flights in January. That's why they need an answer out of us promptly so they can meet their union obligations with their pilots and, and plan accordingly with, with the airplanes.
So when did the last monies end and how far will this monies take us?
Mike, can you answer that better than I can? I don't have the dates off the top of my head.
Yep. The contract was through September 30th of last, of this year. So September 30th was the end of the last MRG. Even though they ran out of money well before that, they're eating the costs and that. That's what the minimum revenue guarantee. They didn't make money, even with the millions that we gave them, they still are losing, what, $400,000, $500,000 a month on this, on their own, without a subsidy. So October 1 would be the beginning of this contract period. That 4.8 million, 4,870,000 roughly, I think it was, I call it 4.9 million dollars, would be from October 1 of this year until September 30 of 2025.
You lied to me on that. What? And before I forget, what was it that you said they met their cap and so they didn't bill us anymore?
Okay, so last year, we offered $4 million.
Okay.
And it was based on fuel and prices, ticket prices and seats and all that. It's, and a lot of that has changed. We found that the prices went down. So they ended up using, they pulled at $4 million out of our minimum revenue guarantee in the first eight months of the year. So they were running without a subsidy for the last, until the end of Sep, uh, September 30th of this year. They were running without a subsidy. So they were just losing money on themselves. That's, that's why they're like, we, we, this isn't working for us, competition's too tight. So October 1 is the new contract period. The 4.9 million would be for the big plane from October 1 till September 30th. Now, if they lose, uh, i- if they burn through it in the first six months, the last six months of that year, they're going to have to eat that on their own. However, we don't, uh, what, we're hopeful the fuel prices will be pretty, pretty attractive in the next, in this coming year. So we're expecting it to go down.
So this, this money goes back to October 1 and ends when?
September 30th of 2025.
And that's 1 million, don't?
Full of 4 million.
That's, the, the contract would be, right. The 1 million would be just to get to the end of this year.
Fourth quarter of the year.
That's what I wanted to know. So when is the 4 million have to be paid?
Before the next fiscal year.
So we're looking at... So we're looking at just recovering with this 1 million that we're both chipping in on. It's a recovery for them because they used up all the money?
You can call it recovery if you want, or you can call it fourth quarter service, either one, you could look at it the same way.
There, it's a recovery. And so we pay in the first of the year for 25, we pay $4 million and it's good for when? How long?
Right. Let me see.
If we pay $4 million at the first of 25, when do we have to pay again?
Three years.
That is one year then?
Correct.
So we would pay 4 million at the first of the year and it goes to the end of the year and we don't pay anything in between?
Not if you pay the, the full MRG, which I, I believe it's 4.8.
It's to the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, fiscal year.
Which is September 30th.
Not calendar.
Not the full year.
Yeah, your fiscal year, not calendar.
On the city's fiscal year, that's easier.
I'm going to call on Counselor Littkey here. Counselor, Counselor Littkey?
Yeah, I'm, I just need to make a comment and then I need to bow out of the meeting. I do apologize, but I need to go to the hospital. Um, you know, it's been really hard to have these conversations and, and I, I get it that people are confused. I, I understand that it's a process that's not been brought to the table a whole lot. And I, I can feel the room, even though I'm not there. I think that there's too much confusion for the council to direct staff. Maybe I'm incorrect, but what I would like to project is that there are other solutions. I don't know that we have to look at this minimum revenue guarantee, and I think there's a lot of confusion as to what that means. This is a check we have to write. If you read up on any minimum revenue guarantee, and there are a lot of them happening in this country right now, the airlines have complete control, 100%. It is not fun. And what I'd like for United to take from this meeting is that we are interested in keeping them. I would like us to at least express that we have the understanding that we need to keep an airport as viable as, as we can. And, and Chairman Peters is correct. I have been speaking to legislators. I do think there's alternate routes to fund this. I certainly do not want to come after the taxpayer any more than we already have. We signed off on the previous MRG with the understanding that if we kept numbers where we needed them to be, we would have a, a smaller check to write. So yeah, it, it, it does feel like we're, we're not being given the correct information. So possibly what we need for this meeting, really for United to hear is that we don't want them to leave. We want them to continue to serve our community, but then we need some time to figure out who our partners actually are. I actually reached out to the port commissioners as well. I believe they're going to discuss this topic and maybe how they can partner with us. And I, I was not at the meeting, but I do believe that they, there was a discussion to put this topic on their December meeting agenda. I am, you know, unfortunately, we can't wait for a packet to come in front of us to better understand what's going on in our community. We have to do the work and we have to have more conversations outside of these meetings. We just have to do it with the open meeting law in our back pocket so that we're doing so accordingly. You know, and, and I, I'm going to say also to Chairman Peters and Director Isaacs, it's hard to make this decision right now with no piece of paper from United in front of us. And so I hope they would understand that that should be part of this request as well is that they put something in front of us that says, okay, if you commit this, we will give you to this timeline. We have not seen anything in writing and that is very hard for us to make a decision. And I would never recommend that anybody say, yeah, that's what we're going to do without that documentation in front of us. And, but I believe that United does want to stay in our community. Nobody likes to have to change their whole schedule, have to change their whole situation. I do think that they want to serve our community, but they are a for-profit company, that the, the money is the bottom line. So in that, I support this airport 100% and I will continue to do the work, but unfortunately, I'm unable to continue this meeting, but I do hear the confusion amongst the council and I do hope that they take the time to really learn about this, what, what it is that airport means to us, because what I have heard and seen over the last three years is that it takes 20 years to do anything in this town and I just don't think that's a reasonable response as leaders. We need to be making moves that complete a project. The reason why we don't have a fire station right now is because priorities during that time were different. What that means to us moving forward, this is a generational decision on how we invest our money and how we support the assets that we have. So it's not always going to be sunshine and roses and we have to do work outside of these meetings. And I would just encourage all of us to consider that in how we present during these meetings so that we don't look like we're making a decision without the information at hand because it's been there. We just need to make sure that we have it on a piece of paper before we direct staff. And, and so I'm hopeful that we can communicate that to United and get them to respond in writing.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Forssman?
Um, if this doesn't go through and we don't agree to the 500,000 today, what is the action plan to try to keep us sustainable, if there is one?
We'll, we'll keep working hard. I mean, we'll just, we'll deal with whatever cards were dealt and we're not going to, we're not going to give up, that's for sure. I mean, we, remember when we started this process, the FAA was here and told us we had 30 days that they were going to close the airport down. That's where we started in 2019. So look where we've gotten in six years. So there's no quit in us, I can assure you. It's just, we're going to be boxed in a little bit on what we're going to be able to accomplish.
Mayor.
Counselor Forssman?
This is more a comment. What I would like to see is before we agree to any money is given, is that we, and see if United Airlines is willing to give a little bit of leeway here, where we talk to Boise, we talk to our surrounding cities and try to see if there is a plan that we can put in place to have others pitch into this cost. And maybe for the future. I know there are cities that become regional airports. I think that's the word for them, when they're sharing amongst the cities around the area and they all pitch in.
They're, they're serving a region. I don't know that they all pitch in, you know, the sponsors, you know, maybe there is, I'm not aware of. I don't believe, for example, our other airports get any monetary contribution from anything other than its sponsors, the two cities that own it, but, but I don't know that for fact.
Right. I'm sure they'd have to.
We're in a real unique situation with a competitor, one, only being 30 miles away and two, being owned by two states, one being a very powerful, powerful polarized political state. And you can see what that means as relationship to funding and getting airlines. You know, there's no way we ever should have lost Alaska. No way. And you see what happened.
Well, if United is willing to let us go through that and ask our other people, I think that would be.
I think it's going to be on us to ask that after tonight. I can almost assure you that they're, if we don't agree to this tonight, we're, we're probably done.
I think either way that we're looking at this, there's a risk for each, each way we take this. If we give money, we might give more money. If we don't give money, we might lose airports or government changes, it becomes competitive again, and now they're begging to come to our airport. We don't know. I mean, endless possibilities. I, that's where I'm standing and I, making the decision on no matter, I'm damned if I do and I'm damned if I don't.
You want to make everybody happy, go sell ice cream.
Yeah, so.
That's what they say.
Exactly. So, but in this part, I'm looking at this, that our budget's only so big right now and we need to look at ways to build that revenue, right, to, to be able to put into this type of funds. And that, that's how I'm looking at this. I agree with Hannah though, Counselor Littkey, that we could talk to United, see what their wheels are on it, see if they're willing to give us a little more stretch room. As far as their comment is doing the research, I think a lot of counselors want to speak out loudly and say it in a public meeting so that the citizens can hear the research and not just keep it in our back pocket and say, hey, we did all this research when the citizens don't know about it. So it's not always the best solution to just go and do all this stuff in the background and then citizens are sitting here wanting to know what's going on and what are you guys working on and we're not publicly saying that. That's, even if I have done the research, I'm still going to ask the question because I want the citizens to hear that I'm doing the research. I want them to know what I'm doing. So I didn't, I didn't really agree with that comment, but I definitely think that we could have some more, if, the paper from United would be at least a step in the right direction.
Counselors Picklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my problem with it, I don't have a problem, I understand your guys' presentation, but if you look at the city's checkbook, in FY '23, we had $13.9 million in reserves. In '24, we had the MRG was 4 million and each year we've had to use a million plus to balance the budget. Right now, I think Director Gordon isn't here, but I think it, we have $7.9 million in reserves and that's to keep the city running. We can't afford to give any money away. I mean, if something happens, we're done. You know, we're like the airport. So, I mean, to me, it's not need to dig deeper. I mean, we've dug deep enough. I mean, if this was your checkbook, you wouldn't be spending the rest of it. That's my point. You can't afford it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful if we could have a log of what is expected of us so that we have something and whatever else they could give us. I mean, I don't like blind and bluff. I don't like either one. And I feel like I'm being bluffed constantly on this because I am blind. Well, I look like I might, should be, but, um, no, we need to not be blind doing this. We have people that are relying on us to make sure that this city has enough money to do what needs to be done within this city. And taking risk is not what we are here to do. And when you're going blind and you feel like you're being bluffed, then I think you got to back away until you get something more tangible.
Comment?
Yes.
Trust me, I, I know there's no shortage of go, of where to go with money and you guys have a, you have so much in front of you. I mean, you're, you're making up for decades of the candidates getting kicked down the road. Like, I get it. So, trust me, but, you know, I think you, you want people like us fighting for the airport. That's why you put us there, was to come down and fight for that entity, to grow the community so all of the investments actually pay off and you have people to enjoy your downtown and to enjoy all these investments that you're making. So, again, it's, it's not personal. I mean, we're just, we're advocates for the airport. I'm going to fight tooth and nail for it. That's what I was asked to do when we got on the board and that's what we asked Director Isaacs to do and we asked everyone there to work as hard as they can, but, so, we know there's no shortage of, of places to go with the money. Like, we get it.
Counselor Picklemeyer, I just want to throw this out there, so everybody knows the same information, but I have a note from Director Gordon because she couldn't be here today and I'll just read it for the public's benefit. She says, "With regards to another MRG contract consideration, the funding source would have to be general fund reserves." As, as you have already said, this is directed to me, we've built a very efficient budget utilizing all other resources available to us. Based on the FY '24 projections and how the '25 budget was built, it's estimated that we would end FY '25 budget with approximately 90 days cash on hand, down from 164 days cash on hand at the end of FY '23. Approval of using reserves towards another MRG contract would put the city in jeopardy of falling below the 90 days cash on hand threshold we utilize as a best practice." So that's what she had to share today. I also want to just, I have not shared this with anyone except our city clerk because she helps me with the mailing, but I wrote a letter to the Board of Directors at United Airlines, thanking them for being in Lewiston and for all the good things that they've brought to our community and talked about some of the successes we've had and told them that, you know, we're working hard and that we faced some, some struggles. And I said that we remain committed to marketing their flights at our expense to keep working towards that like we do for other airlines. And have asked them to stay in Lewiston and be part of our community. So I've not heard back from them. This was two months ago, but I'm trying to reach out to them and build that relationship with them, any angle we can take, but just keep working hard, keep the feet moving and try to bring this, you know, to a successful resolution. So I just, I share that with you tonight.
Thank you for that.
I actually wrote two letters. There was another one to another group at United, but I can tell you about that later. So, Counselor Forssman?
I'm just going to leave with one more, with one last comment. Appreciate the work that you guys put in. You do come up here and, and ask lots of questions and get put kind of under the fire, if you will. And I know your work is voluntary and so I do appreciate all the hard work you guys are trying to put in to get this airport up and standing and fighting the political arena and the politics. I can understand that. So I just, I appreciate that you are willing to fight even if things don't go your way. That's, that to me is a blessing to hear, that even if this is, just doesn't work out, that you guys are still willing to fight teeth and nail and you're not backing out. You're wanting to make it successful and that shows me that your dedication to the airport and I appreciate that. I'm also really excited to see the vision that you've been working on and I appreciate you going and going to the Washington and hope we get to Boise and say they need to help us. If we fall as a city, it affects them, right? I mean, the whole state. And so I hope that they see that and that they help sustain us as a city and our airport and see the benefit and we can become big. But I just wanted to at least express the hard work that you guys are putting in and appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor, you, this is an action item, so you are free to make a motion. If you choose not to do that, then we are going to move on to our next agenda item. And I will wait. Counselor Forssman?
If we went with Hannah's route, if we went with Hannah's route, what was that, to direct staff or to be able to talk to the airport before making this final decision?
Well, I guess how I interpreted that was that we just have some more work to do and we just keep working with the chairman and the director of the airport and turning the soil over. I know she said a couple of things on the phone here and I think I see the top of Mr. Corbett's head back. There's that Jew Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I can't see him, but I heard him. So I don't know what that meeting is about, but I think the message is that we just continue to work and work hard and work fast because time is very short. So that's kind of what I got from her message.
So moving as stands without a vote today would be an acceptable route?
You do not have to make a motion if you choose not to.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no motion, we're going to move on to Rule Number Four, unfinished and new business. Item A, City Counselor Comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the City Council or an item that may come before the City Council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselors? Counselor Comments? Doesn't look like it, okay. Mayor Comments? Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who showed up tonight to our meeting. We appreciate your attendance. I have a couple of other things I'd like to share. The first one is, and this is old news, but I thought it was exciting when it came out, that Lewis Clark State College was recently ranked number one best valed college and the number one best college for nursing in Idaho. So that's, kudos to LCSC for their continued work there. Also, Counsel, for your information, I did attend a senior nutrition program onsite meal. It's on Mondays and Tuesdays at noon, Wednesday, 11:30 at the community center. So if you'd like to go there and see what that program's all about or meet some of the seniors, that's an option. I did that just to visit with them and learn more about the program because we have some questions on that. And my last comment that I'd like to share with you is, is on the 2025 Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. This has been issued by the Public Works Department and it's a formal call for requests. And so you, the public, are invited to participate. And so, you, the public, are invited to participate in updating Lewis's Transportation Capital Improvement Plan. It serves as a vital guide prioritizing later transportation capital improvement projects based on mobility, safety, economic vitality and others. Calls for requests period is November 1st to November 30th of this year. And then, there's an online version of the forum available at thecityoflewiston.org/masterplans if you'd like to look those up. I share this with you because we need public input on our capital improvement plans and where we should spend money or not spend money. It affects everything we do as a city. And so, if we don't hear from the public, then we have to make some of those decisions and sometimes we find out later that maybe that's not what everybody wants. So, if you're available or interested or if you know somebody, please check the city website. We would very much appreciate having your participation in that project. With that, that will end the regular portion of our meeting. Roman numeral five, executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206 Sub 1 Sub F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications of legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet litigated but eminently likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel in executive session does not satisfy this requirement in Idaho Code 74-206 Sub 1 Sub J to consider labor contract matters authorized under Section 74-206 Sub 1 Sub A and B Idaho Code. This is an action item. So, counselors, I would need a motion to go into executive session and if you have your red copy agenda there, it's on the back, you can see that, and it does take a two-thirds roll call vote of the full council.
Mayor.
Counselor Forssman?
Motion to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206 1F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but immediately likely to be litigated in Idaho Code 74-206 1J to consider label, labor contract matters authorized under Section 74, 74 206A 1A and B Idaho Code. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Forssman.
Seconded by Counselor Schroder to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206 1F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated and Idaho Code 74-206 Sub 1 Sub J to consider labor contract matters authorized under Section 74-206A 1A and B Idaho Code. Clerk Brockie?
Council President Kleber?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Littkey is absent, excused. We do have a two-thirds vote. Roll call vote of the full council and so with that, we will enter executive session, I think in that back room. Is that where we're going to go, Jennifer?
So, we have to give our folks in the back just a second to close out the recording, right, or put it on hold before we leave. So, if you give them maybe 30 seconds, then we can head back there.